This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor, here you go.
Here.
Mr. Campos.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here. I'll leave your prayer and pledge of allegiance. Lord, I want to thank you, Lord, for everything you've given us throughout this entire year, Lord, bringing it into the new year. Thank you for everything. Thank you for allowing us to adapt and overcome all situations, Lord. May you guide us this evening. May you continue to guide us like you have for this entire year, Lord. I want you to also ask that you bless our soldiers abroad, also the soldiers that are with us here in our nation, Lord, and the ones that are what we're going to be able to defend and throughout the holidays, Lord. We protect their families, protect them, Lord. We also look out for the sake of the poor and the hungry, or the ones that are needing right now, the ones that will be cold during the holidays, Lord, the ones that will be hungry during the holidays, Lord. Please bless them, Lord, with any type of nutrients, anything, Lord, we ask and we beg for that, Lord, because we love everyone. We want to continue to be a part of you, Lord, and guide, and have you guide us in our faith, Lord, to continue to be good stewards of this world, Lord. Also, Lord, I want to thank you for allowing all the employees in the city of Lovington, Lord, to benefit last, our last go around with our city commission meetings, Lord, they probably deserve a good little something in their stock, Lord, to help them with all their needs, Lord, because they stood by the city, they've taken heed, and they continue to, continue, they continue, Lord, to accomplish every mission and every task that's in front of them, Lord. And the mission has always come first for them, Lord, and they're doing tremendous job, and I want to thank you for guiding them as well, Lord, as well as this board of commissioners, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for guiding us throughout these troubled times that we've endured the last fiscal year, Lord, and thank you for allowing us to also adapt and overcome, Lord, and find new avenues, Lord, and lead us in different directions, Lord, to ensure that we will continue to move forward as one unit and ensure that community benefits to the highest point. Amen.
Amen. I believe to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue the flag of the state of New Mexico to see a symbol of perfect friendship among United Nations.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor, make motion. Approve the agenda submitted.
Second, both of them submitted by committee, second by commission. Bernard, is there a discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to public comment. We have three minutes. Allow everybody three minutes if they'd like to. Please state your name and if you'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor, city officials, residents of Lovington. My name is Chris Gonzalez. I'm a representative of Dos de Rosa operation. We're a tier one cannabis operation. The backstory on myself, I was with the 920th Engineer Company, New Mexico Army National Guard, deployed with in 2009, 2010, Operation Dirt Freedom, volunteered with the floods of Ria dosa, floods and fires as well in Ria dosa. Just to quick, I just wanted to thank the officials here for giving our company an opportunity to try to thrive in the cannabis industry. That's it.
Thank you. Want to serve your service?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Bart Day. I'm also representing the cannabis business. I'm actually a representative for 42 days. I am a, as of Thursday, I was the fourth company to be issued a recreational cannabis license in the state of New Mexico. So I do currently have a recreational cannabis license for the city of Lovington. And so I'm just here to introduce myself. Say hi and I look forward to working with all of you, Lord.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, no one else. Moving on to public.
Yes. I'm calling out of courage.
I'm Eric Plessier, resident of Orange here. And just, you know, I just want to, first of all, thank you guys for like having us, giving us this opportunity to speak on this. Because I look at it like, you know, this is a good industry to move forward in and for us to really like, like, just to, just as a community, just see more jobs get, like, developed within this. So it is, you know, I just look forward to having a business within it and just, just want to thank you guys and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have a public comment. Public comment, moving on to non-action items.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The only non-action item tonight is a public hearing regarding cannabis ordinance.
Lord, it's your thing.
Do you want me to go over it now or at the, do you want me to go ahead and say something now?
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Laura Brock, City of Lovington, annual and code enforcement supervisor. Mayor, Commissioners, tonight, here being brought before you is the cannabis business license registration ordinance. One of the first couple of things I want to talk about is what our control is and what our control is not, just so that you know, if you don't already. Municipalities and counties, they may adopt a time, place, and manner rules, including rules that reasonably limit density of license and operating time is consistent with neighborhood uses and allow indoor and outdoor cannabis smoking and vaping in locations for those 21 plus years of age unless they have a medical license. Okay? And then local jurisdictions, what we cannot do is we cannot completely prohibit the operation of a licensee. We cannot prohibit transportation of cannabis through locality, through the city. We cannot restrict signage at licensed cannabis businesses that identify them or prohibit home cultivation. So those are things that we cannot do.
Sure.
Did I last four seconds?
We cannot prohibit home cultivation. So at a home and at your residence, you are allowed to grow so many plants for your home use, up to 12 plants, I believe. So I just wanted to point a couple of those out. So right now, currently, we've had people coming in and getting licensing. We have zoning here. So we already have rules into place so that they can't just go and operate a business and open one up in a neighborhood. So what we've done is we put it according to what that zone use is. So if it's a business, it's going into the business district. So we already have rules and regulations set forth that they fit into those regulations on what they're doing, whether they're going to be manufacturing. If they're manufacturing, then there's areas that we allow manufacturing type stuff. So it's going to fall into what already is in our zone and what we do and don't allow in our zones. That already go ahead and regulates where they can be as far as any other, like any other business that comes in. If they're manufacturing, what they're manufacturing, the products they're using, it has to go in certain zones. So it's already, that's how we've established it, able to go ahead and transpire this and already put regulations and look at where they're being put in at. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Where are those zones? What are they, what do they consist of?
Zoning.
Right.
It's your economic zones, so they can go into economically. They can't go into, they're not going to be able to do zone like A and zone B, like your home, like in your neighborhood.
Right.
So there's certain restrictions on business, the type of businesses that can go into there. Now, there are type of nurseries that they can have that are in, but they're also still regulated even with the state. So if I own a business and I have little nurseries in separate places at a resident in somebody's backyard per se, you can grow up to only say two, okay, if it was 15, I believe it's 200. I believe it's 200. Is that right? Okay. It's 200 in that nursery. They can only go into there. But that's regulated through the state.
200 in a nursery, in a residential?
Yes, you can.
Okay, see, what, that's what you mean right there.
So if they're licensed through the state, then they have to get a license and they're in the.
I get that part. No, 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 go back, go back.
So in the nursery, it's not, it's the.
You have a nursery in a residential that can have up to 200 plants.
I believe it's 200, yes.
In a residential area, not a business, because that would be considered a business in your backyard, the way I look at it.
Right, the way they're.
But that's, but again, it's mandated through the state, correct?
Correct.
Or the law through the states?
Yes. Everyone knows more about it, so I'm going to have their.
Evelyn will be in with that economic domain. We already are allowing nurseries in the city of Lovington now. So per ordinance, you are allowed, regardless of what plant you are growing, you are allowed to have a nursery. We already have five nurseries of cannabis in Lovington now, but they're only allowed to do 12. But once you become a licensed cannabis operator, you are allowed to have up to 200 at your home. But you cannot sell it from your home. You can just grow it and then wherever you're going to have your business, you can transport to your business, but you cannot sell it from home.
Sorry.
If I may just add, if you know that Lee County was looking at adding to the state law, the additional restrictions of not having a business within 300 feet of a school or a church. I don't know if they voted on this.
School.
There was, they were going to add on a church as well.
It never got passed.
No, they didn't pass.
I mean, the school, the church never got passed. It was only daycares and schools was the only thing that got passed.
Okay, that is state. Right, so they, so they came next to a school. Yeah, the church did not get passed. And they're still amending the states. This goes forward, there's going to be a amendment moving forward and stuff like that. Like right now, they have to have requirements that they have to have zoning letters, which cities within zoning. So there's a lot of things, and then they're trying to slow down the process. So we're constantly in contact with the state and finding out what changes that they're looking at. We're trying to work together in a reporting system if there's violations.
Lord, and on our zoning, since we've got a zoning, what, 20 years now?
Correct.
It doesn't affect this. It's the state who makes the rules. We cannot, we cannot say anything.
Correct. And that's where some of the problem lies, and it's what we can and can't do, and what the state says that we're allowed to regulate and what we can't regulate.
So basically, putting a city ordinance in is useless because it's mandated, regulated through the state.
A lot of it.
And a majority of it is going to be regulated through the state.
Yes.
And then my next question would be, is who's going to enforce it locally?
So that's where locally, if there's any type of complaints or things that come in, then we have a complaint system to think of, it's going to go to the state. The state's the one who's supposed to regulate and put that into place on how that's going to get done. So working relationship, not any different than if we have someone who's violating a state building code and stuff like that and works with the state inspectors.
Well, what I mean is your city ordinance that we're going to put in, this is what I'm trying to understand here, because you're saying the state's going to regulate that and enforce that, but if we put something in place, who are, are we going to enforce that, or is that state? And why would we put something on top of it that the state is?
Correct. So this is in the business section. It's not the zoning. That's why we didn't put it in the zoning ordinance. This business ordinance is going to be regulated by the police department and code enforcement, as you can cite, if they're not getting the licensing that they need for a business. So this is basically a business license, no different than our alcohol.
But the state requires that still, right? You have to get that license through the state?
Correct. Like alcohol, yes.
So there's no really a reason for us to have this here, because the state already has that in place, correct?
Yes, they're still going to have to have a state license, correct?
But that's what I mean is.
Yes. No, we don't have to have this.
Okay. Yeah, it's all, the rules are regular. It's already set out, set out for the balance. I mean, you're right. So then we have no control on anything. Right, but there's no sense to send a, a set of rules. Right, I agree. That we have no control over, yet are constantly changing, and we don't have the staff, or we could, our staff wouldn't be able to enforce it anyway, because it's going to be from the state anyway. So why not just use the state rules and leave it alone?
Your alcohol, it's not even different than you have an alcohol section in your business section.
Yeah, but our alcohol will also change it every other day.
Correct. But on, if you look at the rules that were put in here into this business section, it's much mimics the alcohol license. So the hours that they can be, so the hours of operation when they can be operating.
But this thing doesn't have any of that?
No, that's what was, the state allows a certain amount, like they passed the law that says we're going to allow it in your community, but the only thing that the local community can do is you can out, you can restrict the hours of operation and where it can be located. That's the only thing that technically the city can have a say.
So basically, that's something we can control.
Correct. And then the hours of operation, how?
So they're going to eventually give out an area.
You can't restrict permitting. They have an open, they're not capped. So they can issue 500 for Lovington and that's it. We can't restrict how many licenses we issue.
So then how can we do more extensive?
That's the only thing is because some, some towns have zoning, some towns don't. So I know Hops doesn't have any zoning, so they're, what they did in their ordinance is that they want it to be in an area where you are connected to a 10-inch main. So they are more focused on the water portion of it.
And that's what I didn't see in ours at all, was anything going with the water.
As long as it's metered. I know that the state was very particular when it came, when you apply for your licensing, you have to put what your sources, if you're getting, you have water rights, if you're out on acreage, you have to have water rights. And if you're located within the city, they have to come to us to get in a letter stating that as long as the water is metered and they're paying for it, there's nothing that we can do.
But you have a facility in a residential area that's having 200 plants. That's a lot of waters. It's metered, I get it, I get it. But, you know, you got, you got places, we only got 4-inch maintenance in residential areas.
Correct.
What about security? I'm bringing it up because I went and I looked at different ordinances throughout the state, and one that I thought was pretty good was the city of Carolsbad. And I have that here, and I had a bunch of highlighted, but seeing that you don't have to be controlled over a lot of it.
I have, I've been working with Bart Day. He's the one that's putting in 42 days, and he's actually submitted a whole proposal to the city. And like he said, he is one of the first four that has received licensing in the whole state of New Mexico, if you want to elaborate on security questions of it.
And the water, too. I can do both.
So it's going to be security for just you, or is it going to be security for every provision?
What I would, so moving forward, what I would suggest the council do is actually look at the, look at the regulations as they are for us to actually imply. So for like the 200 in the city limits, I'm with you guys. I feel like that's a lot to have in a residential area. But there are regulations in it that you guys can tie into the code that will give you some authority. So things like making sure it's not visible. You also could put things like in there smell remediation. So making sure that there's certain things to avoid the smell from traveling outside of a particular range. You could do 25 feet of property, 50 feet of property, whatever. Those, I believe, are regulations that you can adjust, because they're already in the state regulation. So my suggestion to you guys is to really look at the state regulation on what the levels of security, water usage, look at the regulations they have. And one of the benefits, and I know this is a loose term, benefits through the 200 plant grow, is from a city and a security perspective, it would almost be better if everybody could have the 200 plant grow, or if you guys can get with the state to limit the personal growths. Because at this point, every, every household and every person can have 12 plants on their property. 12 plants can fill up somebody's entire vacuum and smell from a half a mile away. So what I would do is maybe take a look, I think you guys have the opportunity to set regulation on how those 12 are grown, and you could set the regulations there, and look over the security requirements. The security requirements are actually very, very intense. They're, they're more regulated than they are for liquor, and they're patterned out to casino security. So they pattern casino security and kind of loosely fit it for the cannabis industry. Like I have to have a camera every 20 feet. I have to have a perimeter. If somebody comes onto the perimeter of a property, it needs to be, there needs to be an audible alarm that has to alert the authorities. So there's, I would suggest you look at those rather than you waste a bunch of time talking about the security requirements. Water is an issue in New Mexico. I can't deny that, but there's a lot of misinformation about water and cannabis farming. For me to grow 1,200 pounds, which is my, that's what I budgeted for my first year. My water usage on that is 240,000 gallons. That sounds like a lot, but it's also three acres. So I'm using less than one acre foot of water for three acres of cannabis production for an entire year. So a lot of.
Oh, you said, I missed that part. I'm sorry. You said a year. I'm thinking daily.
No, 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 that's, no. So I'm like, no, it would be, it would be. So my annual water usage and my water usage plan, which I wrote and I submitted, is 288,000 gallons in an entire year for 1,200 pounds of production. So it seems like a lot, and people talk about water usage for the cannabis market, but it's not really.
About 800 gallons a day, roughly, something like that.
Yeah, it's not insanely, insanely high. For people that are doing the 200 plants, if it's on metered water, it's going to be maybe a couple months out of the year that they are actually paying above the, above their, their standard basic utility costs. So I wouldn't focus too much on water usage when you're looking at it. And if you want the breakdown, I'll send you my water usage plan, whatever you need for that. So.
Going back to security. Yeah, so the state is regulating, has already regulated the security, gets all that data, like with the cameras and so.
You do, and yeah, and I would suggest that you guys take a look at it, because like I said, you can put that in your code. You can put a lot of those in the code so that, I mean, Lovington, if all you do is copy and paste the state code to your city code, it does give code enforcement some leeway. They don't necessarily have to repeat to report to the state if they're breaking a city code. And if the city code patterns the state code, then we know that there's cause, this section. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that, that would be my suggestion.
Give you more teeth at the lower level.
It would give you guys as code enforcement some teeth. Yeah. And then also, when you're writing the code, really, I guess the focus, if I were in your position, the focus would be on 12 plants that everybody can grow. Everybody's entitled to grow those 12 plants, but you guys can dictate how they grow.
Not in the open.
Not in the open, that they have to be covered, and you could copy and paste at least a portion of the security for that. Like I don't, I think that if you were to make them require cameras and all of, all of those things, that you would get, you would get a lot of pushback. It would never work. I don't think it'd stand. But you can do things like limiting the site, limiting the smell, those, those types of things. So review, review the, review it really, really well, because that would be my suggestion.
So just for information.
Yeah.
So on 12 plants, how much footage would a person need?
They could use, they could use four square feet, or they could use a square mile. They can grow.
Well, I just, I mean, just.
I would say, I would say 12 plants, grown the size in a, in a, in an easy season in New Mexico, a large space for that would be 20 by 30 people.
That's, that's, that's.
That would be a large.
Because that, with that number there, if you just say 20 by 30, there's.
Yeah.
But 20 by 30 in most people's house. So any, any of our properties that are 5,500 feet or square feet, you're, you can't have it. They're going to have to have a 7,000 square foot lot or larger, just to grow 12 plants.
Right, but you can, but I don't think that's something you can dictate.
Right, but realistically.
Yeah.
How many people are really going to grow those things? They're going to take up all their yard and how big they get and stuff.
Well, people will, people will if they can. I mean, why not? If they can, they will. But, you know, you guys know that. But I would do things like limit that you can't see it over the fence. And if they're, look at the wordings of the, of the security measures, and you can pattern some of that to, to local.
Laura, thank you.
If you choose to move that direction, that would need to go into zoning, because it'd use the property.
Yeah, and then, and then code enforcement would have some, some teeth.
Can you state your first and last name?
Bartholomew Day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, I.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So cannabis retailers can sell their products on a Sunday mornings between, from 7:00 AM onwards, when normally alcohol is not sold up until noon on Sundays.
Didn't that rule just recently change? I had that concern.
That was changed. Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Is that, they can't or they can't?
The alcohol has changed. Where you used to, on Sundays, you could sell till after people got out of turds.
Right, and now it can.
And now, that's changed.
Okay, that's changed. And the same holds true for marijuana.
As far as I know, yes. I believe, yes. And I did get those hours from another city. So I did look at other counties and cities and what they were doing.
Thank you.
When it came to the hours. And it pretty much mimics the alcohol in all of those.
So as far as cannabis consumption areas? Yeah, anything for that?
Yes, we do. Smoking of cannabis products in a public place except as permitted by state law is prohibited. And then they had areas, I think, consumption area. Cannabis consumption areas are subject to the following. A cannabis consumption area in which consumption is limited to consumption by qualified patients or recipients may be located inside any cannabis retailer provided, however, that smoking of the cannabis products in such consumption areas is only allowed if the cannabis consumption area is in a designated smoking area or in a standalone building from which smoke does not infiltrate other indoor workspaces or other indoor public spaces where smoking is otherwise prohibited.
So as far as it's going to have separate buildings, you're going to have separate ink bag, so that no smell is going to be able to go into the building next door?
That's, yeah, that's the intent. Yes, is that it can't get into, that's what it says, it can't infiltrate the building next to you, if you have a smoking.
As far as the licenses, include the proof of tax ID and.
GRTs.
Okay. What about the waste? From it?
It's dictated by the state.
It's dictated by the state. It's in that already?
It is part of the application process and it's part of the, for the state. You can, I mean, obviously, you can do it. You could probably address the waste down your end as well, but it's already, it's cannabis waste, and cannabis waste usage is addressed in the code.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we had a way of getting rid of this, because I didn't see any of that in here.
Yeah, it's, it's already addressed in the state.
As far as servers permits, Laura, too, you're going to have that permits to be able to sell it, same as you would with alcohol?
Right, and you can't sell it in to anybody under the age of 21. Not any different than the, than the alcohol.
And it can't be served where alcohol is served?
Correct.
That's what I see.
Very correct. Okay. Or is that?
Now, this is all stuff that really should be added.
Sure, yeah.
The state, right, right. But I said, if we have any, you said, look what the state's has in there, we can put in our ordinance, put in our ordinance.
What would you like added? Section, just basically give the copy and facial.
I need to see what the state says. I need to look at stuff first before I.
Okay.
The ways part. Right.
Got you, so.
Sure.
So it's just like, I look at it like, just. And I'm just saying like, so you got to have all this in play before you even get licensed. So it's like, it's already like going to be under control by the state. So it's like.
And that's what I said, I'd like to see it, so I can look at it and see and understand it.
Yeah.
Not that I'm going to say, okay, we'll go on it. I need to have stuff in front of you that I can look at and read and understand before I say yes. I need to have stuff in front of me that I can look at and read and understand before I say yes. That's just the way I am.
If I have any, even if I say.
Yes, and I understand, and I understand that it's coming from the state, but I just like to look at it, that's all.
Yes, so, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, Laura, you know, it's pretty much a moot point, I don't have any control.
Yeah, I just have the security, you just have red, so.
Right, and I think from the state, I've had stuff from the state and I got it in the house and I got stuff from the city of Carolsbad. So I haven't gotten anything from the state, but yeah.
It's, to be honest with you, it's typically not even in my radar. It's not something I, I do or care about. I have some real concerns about it, but unfortunately, mine are, still I haven't done a lot of research on it. And that's why we're kind of here fumbling around because it's kind of thrown in our lap at the last minute. I mean, we kind of knew it was going to happen, but we thought the state would come along here a little bit better. There, as you say, they're still changing their rules every day, so.
Yes.
I mean, we want to make sure we have something and we're not having to come back and repeat it.
It's just not putting the security, like, all that would have to be within your application, so like, go see, like, okay, yeah, like.
And that's why, why we try to make it as simple as possible, you know, that's why this is pretty simple.
So on the business side, I probably don't have a problem because it's, it's large enough that people are having, it's the smaller areas where I'm having an issue with. You know, you have massive growth in residential area, you have the stands, you have the waste, you have lots of different things. And like I said, you know, okay, so if the person does a twenty by thirty in their back garage, okay, so we already know everybody in Lovington shoved something into the smallest piece of property you can. And, you know, now you have building ordinances, we got five foot of leeway, you already have enough issues with the other stuff we have. So now we're throwing on even more onto your plate that's not going to be handled. So I really want to make sure that we, we handle this in a way that we're not constantly having to change and people that are wanting to get into this industry aren't thinking, well, these guys don't know what we're doing. We're just, we're behind the eight ball right at that moment, so.
But they could probably throw out the whole entire state, so. It's a learning curve for the state in New Mexico, even though they have all the money to break their.
Supposedly. Really? Come on, they don't got to do it, come on, kill them.
And the thing is, we don't have to do this, we can just do it what we've been doing. But then it's not regulating the hours and things like that, so, but we can do, like, what we're doing now, like, as far as the businesses coming in, until the, we don't have to do it, we're just going to do it the way we've been doing it, that's what we're.
We're just following state law, basically.
Correct, and we're putting it into our zoning as it is. This just basically adds a little extra to the hours and stuff like that and the permitting process.
Keeps them more in line with alcohol and things like that, as far as hours go.
Yes.
Laura, can you?
Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead, for Mr. Coppel.
This is actually.
I'm good, I'm. I'm good, I'm listening, I'm following.
Patrick, did you have something?
Yeah, so, there, there's a, there's a. There's a couple of things that I think are important for you to consider. And I've, I've got a lot of feedback, so it's, it's kind of hard to hear properly. But one of the things we need to take a look at is how we deal with these types of issues with zoning. We already have zoning in place. If you want to make changes to zoning, we're going to have to go through the process like we did in the past of changing the zoning ordinances, which is not easy because of the notices that we have to send out to people. The other thing to take into consideration, and you know, a, a good point brought up by Commissioner Bolt is security. So what are those issues? Those are very good issues to address. One of the things I want you to keep in mind, though, is if we pass something in our ordinance that deals with security or water use or the disposal of waste products from some of these facilities or, or grow facilities, we have to have the personnel that's going to be able to enforce that. So one of the things that's really important for us now is to take into consideration how we are enforcing some of our existing ordinances. And are we really in the position to dedicate, you know, personnel to, to deal with some of these issues? It's great, it feels good to pass those ordinances, it makes everybody happy. But if we don't have the personnel and the personnel that are trained properly to enforce these ordinances, are, are we really doing any of the citizens of Lov- Lovington a service or not? So that's really important to take into consideration. The other thing I think we need to do is each one of you need to take a look at the state law from the start to finish, and so you'll have a very good idea of what the state requires as far as licensing and some of the other issues that we're talking about. So un- until we get to that point, you know, my recommendation is to take a look at enforcing the existing zoning that we have right now. If somebody's doing something in their backyard where there's offensive smells or odors, we've got a means to address that right now. We don't need new law to address that. The other thing is we need to take a look at how we do the application for the business license and any permit process that we're going to go through. I think we are in a position to address those issues. But it's very important for each one of the commissioners to read the state law, have a good understanding of what the state has already put in place and who's going to enforce that already. And then we can come back and take a look at what's really important for the citizens of Lovington and what ability the city has to enforce any of the ordinances that we already have on the book or new ones that we're going to put in place for the cannabis industry, so.
Appreciate that, Patrick. Laura, on the carnival stuff?
Yes, sir.
Could you elaborate on that, what you put down, your.
On the carnival?
Like, like, like the distributing, so.
Carnival or cannabis?
Cannabis, on the carnival, like, let's say, is there anything pertaining to, like, let's say, the Lee County Fair and rodeo? When they come here and somebody opens up a stand at the fair and rodeo.
There's no mobile.
There's no mobile, so there is no mobile, so.
We already have that place.
Well, that one is actually in here.
We do have a mobile. Okay, can you elaborate a little on that to us?
It just says that no mobile, so nobody's going to be pulling up in, in a mobile, like, little van on the side corner, you know, for self.
So can I get my cannabis tacos anymore?
Exactly, I have a problem with that, you know.
Yes, sir. First, one thing to say. First, I don't want to worry about, personally, as a, as a residential owner, okay, a little pitter corner of David, okay? You can't see what he's doing, let your poop over his fence. You have, there is, I've never got the smell, I, I, I have the smell of his area at all. Didn't even know what he was actually doing until I kind of put two and two together, okay, because you couldn't tell. He, you know, he was just yelling, they're in and out all the time, everything else, they're working people and stuff like that, never knew. So as far as, you know, the, the beings unsightly and everything else, if you do it the way he do it, you shouldn't have a problem in, in the neighborhood, hopefully. But in my neighborhood, like I say, I'm in a pitter corner from him and you don't see it, you can't smell it. So basically you don't know what he's doing outside of, but you know, his day to day operations, whatever that is. You know, yeah, you got a few people coming in and out, you know, he goes on vacation or he goes, he leaves, you know, for a few days and people watch his house, you know, normal stuff every day. I just want to put that out, in my neighborhood, he's there, but there's no adverse activity of any kind.
Thank you.
Just giving you a little update from a, from a residential person.
Laura, on the, on the permitting, Laura, that we issue out? If they don't have a permit for most things, that, is that where the process ends or, or, we have to still issue a permit?
We have to give them a business license.
Can you come over to confirm?
Application process is that you have to submit a city business license.
Exactly, and until we issue that business license, then they can't.
Apply.
Exactly, I just want to make that clear to everyone that until they get a business license, that means they have to meet the standards of state standards, any standards that we might set for before we even issue that.
Correct, they have to get the city license and then they, so that's some of the problems that we've even had with licensing period. Shannon and myself working together is that a lot of times they need this prior to getting their state. And one of the things it says is you need your state prior to us giving you the, the, your city. So it's a working relationship on, okay, well, we can give you this, but then Ms. Shannon has to follow back with them to make sure that they brought back that state, meeting those requirements for the state.
I just want to verify that, say that no, we just can't open up shop automatically, they still have to get a city permit, business license.
Correct, even though they're state licensed, no different than here, even though you may get a state license to build something, you're still supposed to come in and get your city stuff too, so, yes. And that's where this saying that they have to come in and get this license, and then if they don't, then we can cite them for not getting the.
Oh, should it just, yeah. Correct, because it's a state department.
Well, they're not going to get anything to do with state.
Until they get city.
Until they get the city, so they have to, the way I understand it, they have to get the city's license first, they have to meet the standards of the state, they get the state license. Then if, if done properly, you just bring the state license back and show the city that hey, you followed all this, and we are opening business. That would be the correct way I understand it.
Correct, so there's somebody I'm going to run into out there that, they're, if they don't have a city business license, they're not going to say, hey, well, I have my state license, because that's just, that's not the process and it didn't happen, so.
Yeah.
No. And a lot of the tents, the one thing that I've learned in speaking to the owners of operating these, the tents a lot of times already have a filter system within them also. They have filtration system for the tents that people are using to grow in, just so that you know. I thought that was interesting and pretty neat, because that was my main concern was the odors and the smells. So, but they, everybody that I've talked to has a game plan and is going to address it. And if it becomes a problem, then they're willing to work and figure out what they need to do better to make it where it's not a problem. If there is a problem that arises.
And Laura, so I feel that the board has pretty much gave guidance and outlined an ordinance that mimics the state in pretty much security in some areas that, that they have mentioned. So most likely what you have for on resolutions out here, will that be, should we table that? Is what I'm asking, why, why move forward with the resolution? We don't have something sound that the board is comfortable with moving forward.
If I may, if you table it, do you guys have a date on when you want to come back? Because it's just approval to advertise the ordinance.
Yeah, so that way you can get feedback.
That way we know when we need to have a fire, if you guys can make a date to bring it back whenever we get to that motion.
So the good thing would be to put it out for people to see and for the public and the businesses and stuff like that and then get more feedback and stuff like that. And then if changes need to be made, then we're going to, this is just to put it out there and say, hey, this is what.
This is just advertising.
Yes, and to put it out there and say, hey, this is what we're wanting to do, and then we can get some feedback on it.
I'm not approving it to put into anything, we're just.
Correct, you're just approving to advertise and say, this is what the city's looking at doing, and then that's when we'll get a lot of your feedback. And then you may just, then you move on it from there and put it on the end of what we can give back and.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm looking at is what you're proposing is, is fall short of what the board is asking, so maybe.
So right now, we're approving to advertise a draft we submitted, that she submitted. So you, you want to go ahead and table this resolution and bring back another ordinance to approve to advertise?
I, I think so, because the board, you're falling short of what the board is asking, what's already on, is what I'm saying. And if we go ahead and move forward, we're going to have to go back to the commentary again. I'd rather you, we come back with another resolution that, that mimics what the board has expressed concerns about, and they are on the ordinance prior to moving forward on this one.
First meeting of February?
First meeting in January, yes.
January?
Are you going to do it that quarter?
Oh, Laura, Laura did it in a week, so.
I did it in three days.
Three days.
Oh, that's, I was asked to do this, so this is not something I've dreamed of, just so that you know.
Is that a good idea, guys?
Three days, I think we need to get this moved forward.
No, no, we appreciate it, we appreciate it, Laura, I'm just saying that, that hearing the feedback from the board on this, I think we need to add more literature to the resolution prior to moving forward. And maybe, maybe consult with the commissioners one on one to see any other thing they may have concerns about.
Should we do an open, like, outline, get public, we want.
That's what we have to do, that's what we're, is what I'm saying. Before our resolution, this is what we're having today, we're having this public hearing. But I can say, the feedback that I'm getting is that we're falling short on our resolution and we need to add that more literature to, to, to mimic what their concerns are about. But I, I feel strongly need to get contact and permission from Commissioner, to see what they're, what they're proposing and ensure that their, their, and then we can address it as a whole and then make a decision.
If I may, she did email each one, so whenever she does, I guess whenever, we'll need it back. If we want to do the first meeting in January, we'll need commission.
No, do the second meeting.
You want the second?
I know what I got going on.
Okay.
At the first February, but second meeting's.
Okay. So when we table that feeling motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
All right.
Certainly other discussion. Mr. Coppel, again?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Patrick, you, you okay?
Yeah, I think that's the proper way to approach it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on, at ten items, do I have a motion?
As mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty one dash one oh four, approval to execute a contract for financial consulting services.
Most was made by Mr. Dandy, second by Mr. Bernard. In regards to. Currently, right now, we don't have a treasury, we have a deputy treasurer and assistant to the deputy treasurer. What this would do is contact FPR or CPA, who is recommended by our current auditor, which is our, our twenty twenty, twenty twenty one finances. They had recommended to reach out to him to help us assist us in our audit due to experience with our current staff. And what they will do is they will gather the information that is requested by the auditor, send it to FPR CPA. He will make changes if needed, assess and evaluate everything prior to, to send it on to the auditor. And that's pretty much his task for the next sixty days. After that, then pretty much, most likely, we won't need him. I think if I guess our new treasurer who will come on board the third of January, so she'll have some experience with this audit as well as the other two ladies and our couple of swiss in our next fiscal year audit. But this is to assist us in our, our current audit to ensure that all the requests are, are, are approved as well as evaluated by both FPR, our staff and the auditor prior to her final judgment on how we conduct our business in twenty twenty.
Stand up, Mayor, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
I've reviewed the contract, I think it looks good. And I think for the reasons you just stated, it's a good idea for a, they, try to get back on track on some of these.
Yes, sir.
We have a dollar figure.
Sure, the contract is, it won't exceed the sixty thousand.
It's sixty thousand, but then if you figure out everything else that. It's sixty thousand, but then if you figure out everything else that had an inch of it.
Somewhere around eighty thousand. And how much he is, he has to, uh, to, uh, do, but like I said, it's the audit only last sixty day audit, and depending on how much, some of the, uh, the, the request from the auditor will easily be handled by our staff, but there's questions that our staff do have to work, to go for someone that understands what they're looking for, you know, for, uh, I think it's very vit- vital that we come out with a good, uh, audit report, I know it's gonna cost us, but, uh, we do not have a treasurer with experience in place right now, and, uh, and if, and if we have a bad audit, it does affect us financially, and, uh, financing, and, uh, any capital funding that moves in our direction or grants, so, it's very vital that we come out ahead on our, on our audit. Eight thousand might sound like a lot, but you gotta bring a dollar grant set, if it's not approved, or someone else has to be the holder of the funds, because there are auditors for, it's, it's kind of somewhat embarrassing for one thing, but another thing is that, so, we, we like, you know, we have the chance, we have the opportunity right now to, to have someone assist us in this, and I think it's very vital that we do so. And they may be less, uh, I think, I think the girls are pretty savvy on what they're doing, they just wanna make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. And, uh, hearing from the, the previous auditor, that was one of the, the reasons I, uh, she stated was for the bad, it was a communication breakdown between her and the tre- and the treasurer at the time, uh, there was a lot of communication breakdown, she wasn't getting permits that were passed, and, uh, led to, uh, someone before.
I'm good, whenever you go.
I'm good, we need somebody in place like that, that knows the number, I mean, somebody credible. Certified. We're gonna be in trouble to be in straight. No. There's no further discussion? Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
No.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes. Yes. Motion passed.
This, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021 dash 110, approval of the Open Meetings Act.
Second, also was made by, Danny, seconded by Commissioner Bernard.
Just our annual approval of the Open Meetings Act, everything that needs to be said is in the resolution as well. It's just saying, we have our open meetings, five, three, four, commission meetings, or it's something we approve manually, it's changed on it.
Certainly, discussion. Certainly, discussion, roll call, vote Shannon.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes. Resolution passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 2021 dash 111, approval of the advertisement of ordinance laid to the cannabis business licensing, admitting, reserved section 516, 040, until January 24th, to give us time to look over state law and make adjustments as necessary.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Danny, seconded by Commissioner Bolt, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes. Resolution is stable. Motion?
This, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021 dash 112, appointment of temporary chief procurement officer.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Danny, seconded by Commissioner Bolt, uh, procurement officer is the one that oversees the RFPs and is the staff of approval for it sent off to the state, we don't have a procurement officer that our P is invalid, so it's a temporary chief procurement officer, both ladies are slated to go class in February, we've asked the state for a variance, and they have given us a variance, and, uh, we can have Tracy, which is, uh, our deputy treasurer, A P R, chief procurement officer, temporary chief procurement officer until she's completed her course. Certainly, discussion. There's no discussion, roll call.
I believe you'll need to do an amendment to her, as I was pointing to.
Oh, sorry. To add, uh, Tracy Espinosa as temporary chief procurement officer.
Motion was amended by Commissioner Danny, including Tracy, deputy treasurer, Tracy Espinosa is our chief procurement officer, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. There's no further discussion, roll call, vote Shannon.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes. Resolution passed. Go on to close session.
This, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, go on to close session pursuant of section 10 dash 15 dash one, N M S A 1978 subsection H2 regarding limited personnel matters, city manager candidate update.
Roll call.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes. Yes, we are in close session.